Yes, and she's been on the clip on shades for some time. Behind John Freeman.
It's like an X file.
Touring the ham.
You were starting to jam?
Sure.
You have a flat set?
Oh.
Yeah, I had a remark, I went back.
Tomorrow at 1:15 after I meet with you.
Cassie didn't see so I said.
You're not going to be in the same room.
No.
Where it is, Linda's sitting.
No, no, I meant Mr. Williams.
Oh, yes.
Are we meeting, are you meeting?
No, you're sitting.
Me and Mike will be in a second. I bet.
That'll be yourself. Wow.
I'm sick.
You're sick. You need to sit. I'll see you later.
Is everybody ready?
Mm-hmm.
The second thing, there is no sound.
No.
Okay, yeah.
Everybody, there is no microphones. So, those little boxes on top of the dais, those are our microphones.
For these?
Uh-huh, that will pick up everything on the dais.
No.
And everything down front. So, what you want to do is make sure you project enough so that the people attending people can hear.
Project, do you need to project?
Okay, I can project today.
Just.
I'll try.
Sit on Cassie's lap.
We will call later, a special session, and the roll call please.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lejeune?
Here.
Councilman Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Gates?
Here, President.
Councilmember Hanson? Councilmember Hanson?
I'm sorry, I said here.
Here.
Councilmember DeCorte?
Here.
Discussion with municipal direction to staff regarding actions to address billing questions, issues, problems relating to the environmental fee.
Mayor, I think they're having trouble hearing, maybe they can turn it out front.
Yeah. Say closer, maybe?
The mics aren't working, so if everybody wants to come up forward so you can hear, I'm sorry, some of us don't exactly have good voices today, we do our best.
Yes.
Nobody ever wants to sit in the front, I know. Oh, I got it, thanks. All right, great.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you recall that back in November 2014, the council trying to address the concerns about trying to pay for costs associated with environmental services, the wash, cleanings, a number of things that we do that are mandated with stormwater management by the federal government, we were directed by council at that time to do an environmental fee, and implement an environmental fee. So, this budget year as part of that, the council had in their budget a new fund called the Environmental Fund, and that Environmental Fund had the assumption of a $36 per parcel fee that would be assessed to each parcel. Now, the staff went through a very, what I would consider a model process of trying to inform the public about this new environmental fee. There were, the staff and I worked very closely with Bob Burns with the Downhill Times, they did, ran a series of articles on this. We also worked with staff to put in an article in The Loop, which is our special interest magazine that goes out to each and every household, and we also held a number of open houses to try to get the word out on this, this environmental fee. We really, in my opinion, did a really good job on trying to get the word out. We went through and worked through the assessor's office and our billing partner, in this case it's AMS, to actually utilize the records that the Maricopa County Assessor's Office utilizes, because obviously they have all the data for all of the parcels that we have in our town. So, we went through that process, we also had a letter that went out to each and every household describing that this environmental fee would be going into effect, and it preceded the billing that went out in January by about a month, it went out in December. And so, we started seeing over the course of time after the bills went out, that there were a number of these, what I call anomalies, and you have them in front of you. Craig and, Craig Rudolphy, our finance director, and Beata Bogdan, our accountant, are here tonight, but I have to tell you, we've received numerous calls from people, the most common initial call, people were just trying to see, is this legitimate? Because the company was based in Florida, which, I'm not going to go into the reasons why that happened, but we tried very hard to find a company locally that could do this, but the only one that responded was this company in Florida that do this. Once we started getting all these calls, that, there were, and there were a lot of these unique situations, people had common areas that they were getting bills for, there were people that had, you know, the addresses were wrong, we had people that were very confused by what they received, and so I'm going to have, turn this over to Craig. What our goal today is, we requested a special session because there are some things that we need to have some decisions made, and we're hoping to have that done today. If we just had a work session, you would give us kind of some, you know, direction, but not necessarily decisions. And so, we'll go through some of these issues that I outlined, that Craig will go over, and we're hoping to get some direction and some specific responses to the questions that we receive from the residents on this. Again, I'm not empowered to, you know, undo or redo what the council did, so that's why we're here. We really need the council to actually provide approved direction and action on this environmental fee. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to our finance director, Craig Rudolphy, who has a presentation.
Mayor and Council, we have done our best to implement what you asked us to do. To my surprise and chagrin, the effort was significantly and substantially more involved than I would have ever anticipated, and I don't think we could have possibly anticipated all the unique situations from a simple desire to collect revenue from parcels. We've done our best, we've probably received in excess of 200 telephone calls, and I would guess that between staff and one particular volunteer, we've probably put in in excess of two man months so far, just trying to issue the bills, get ready for the bills, answer the questions, research some of the particulars, and it almost seems like it's a never-ending process. I can report that as of today, our billing company, AMS, has collected a grand total of $378,975, representing payments from 10,527 parcels.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the number of parcels again?
10,527. They have approximately 1,000 returned mail envelopes, for whatever reason, we have not yet seen those reasons, whether they were delivered to the wrong address, whether the people refused delivery, we have several that have been forwarded me, that according to the yellow sticker that the post office places on the envelope, they say refused, and they say indispute. So, it's not my intent to address those individual ones, but in front of you, you have a four-page handout, the first page of which is some general questions and comments, trust that you review that, this is the general comments that we received from the public concerning the invoicing. What I would really like to do, first I'll answer any questions and provide more background for any council members that would like it, but what I'd like to do is, starting on page two of the handout, there's 26 questions, each one is a unique situation, they're grouped as close together, simple, the same circumstances, but nevertheless, they are unique individual anomalies, and I would like to, with your permission, to go through them and get some specific definitive response on how to handle each one of them.
So, you want to start with number one, and you want to comment on it, is that how you want to work it?
Yeah, and if I could just add too, Craig and I were talking earlier today, and there are going to be some of these that have commonalities, so there's going to be some of these that might be zero parcels, in other words, they might have a, they might be listed on the assessor's office, was there a parcel, you might have a property that has maybe two or three different parcels for the property, and I think it's good for Craig to go through this, because he does need to get some direction on this, because there are people who requested or we gave him assurances, we tried to address their individual situation, but I do think, and ultimately, maybe when we look at the end of the discussion today, on trying to come up with solutions or ways to resolve these, that maybe we might be able to find some commonality with some of these, as far as groupings of this, but I think the one thing that, keep in mind that when the council took action on this and directed staff to do this, I think the intent of the council was that each household basically would be paying, I don't believe that you were anticipating that there would be three per property, and there's some really weird things that you're going to probably see here, council member Hanson brought to our attention, for instance, at Eagles Nest, there's a couple streets that are actually parcels, so there's just some, some of these really weird things that just, the assessor's office has in their records and their database, that just are, just a little bit on the bizarre side. So, what I want you to think of as you're going through this, as Craig's going over this, that there are some commonalities, not necessarily with all these, there are going to be some weird, unique things, but there's also some things that are pretty, you know, what I call no brainers, the ones that might be nonprofits or churches, you know, do they pay, yes or no, I mean, those are pretty obvious to me. So, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Craig.
Councilwoman.
Madam Mayor, Craig, if I may, just to further establish the baseline, you mentioned what we've already collected, how many parcels are paid, what was the budget that was in mind for this whole project?
We had estimated 15,000 parcels at $36, which turns out to be 540,000.
So, it was straight scale, 540 was in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
And then Craig, just so that they know too, we had anticipated how much that this would cost for the processing and remittance?
Yeah, our cost to bill was estimated at $80,000.
And what has it been if we just have just the one billing and not going?
Based on what, based on the letter that we sent out, the introductory letter, as well as all the invoices for the first time, we have incurred a cost of $44,734.
So, we're netting almost 340 on this?
Correct. Any future billings, rebillings are going to be $1.99 each.
And just something I forgot to say, if I may, I apologize, council member, something I neglected to say is when Craig said it's taken two months of manpower to address this, this has really put an impact on Craig and the staff relating to budget. You know, we actually started the budget a little bit behind, because we were actually getting inundated with questions, and also, you know, the retreat, and he does like a quarterly budget presentation, so Craig and the staff have really been impacted by this, and I'm not, I'm not putting the blame or trying to play up sympathy, but the point is, is that the issues that we addressed really were not anticipated, I mean, we had what we thought, at the time the council approved this, we thought this was going to be very straightforward, and that's, unfortunately, the records of the assessor's office just did not turn out to be that way. So, with that all, oh, I'm sorry, Cassie, you had a question, I was, sorry.
Craig, just can you remind me why, what, why decision was made to bill per parcel as opposed to address?
I don't know why, statutory authority prevented us from billing by size or value of parcel.
But does, it wouldn't change if it was address, I get, you know, the water company bills by address, sanitary bills by address, so I just wondered what made this one different?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, I don't think there was really any, any legal impediment that, at the time, the discussion kind of came upon us, without a whole lot of buildup, and so we were reacting to that, and the reaction that we gave was, there's only one legal impediment you have, and that is you cannot bill by size of property or value of property, if you're going to pick something, you need to pick a uniform method, whatever it is, and parcel was, was chosen.
It just seems like address would have alleviated some of these crazy parcel situations, and if that would be even something that we could consider going forward rather than trying to, because it's going to be time consuming to even deal, you know, if the decision's made on how to deal with these, all of these items, still is, it just seems more cumbersome than if we could do it by address.
I think the assumption at the time was that the assessor's office was in possession of the best records available, and that's, that's proven to be incorrect.
I mean, it might be something we could at least get addresses from sanitary or water or something.
Mayor and Council, I believe we've asked both sanitary and water, and I don't believe that they were willing to share those addresses with us, I'm not positive, but I think we have. The town in our accounting system does not have addresses, we may have something in our GIS system that has situs addresses, but not necessarily billable addresses.
Why would they share? Why would they share?
Why wouldn't they share?
No, I'm just questioning, why wouldn't they share them? I don't, I don't know what the big deal is. Do we have any idea?
I do not, I know the town, prior town manager had conversations with those entities to inquire about their willingness to bill for us, and I believe in that discussion he asked, but I would have to defer to him or someone that would know better.
My understanding was that, that they were asked to bill for us, they would not, but I think it might be worth checking to see whether or not the issue of, I think Cassie raises an excellent point, to go back to them and specifically ask if they would be willing to share the addresses, all the addresses with us.
We definitely didn't want to multiple bill our residents for this.
If we invite by addresses, Craig, how does that reduce the 15,000, because this is parcels? And was our intention to, to bill an empty lot, or just a home?
Madam Mayor? I can't answer that, I was just trying to implement what council said, and I heard bill by parcel.
The, and if I may, I think if you looked at what our costs were, I think we were looking at approximately $540,000, and I believe that we were trying to recover those costs in the 15,000 parcels at 36, happen to be that now, if it was by address, might mean that it's maybe fewer addresses, and the fee might be actually higher.
Mayor and council members, according, talking to Ken Valverde, according to our land use planners, we're 11,000 addresses in town.
11,000?
And that would come off to about, if 36, no, that's just a guesstimate, that's about $396,000 if you take the 11, 11,000.
So, it'd have to be a little bit higher to recover 540.
Thank you.
One more baseline, what was the mandated fee from the EPA regarding this expense? Do you remember?
The stormwater, do you remember what that?
Well, I guess I'd prefer to defer to either Paul Moon or probably Raymond.
Raymond, maybe?
Raymond, no.
Raymond, do you know?
I know we estimated, I remember it was 400 something, I don't remember what the exact number was, but more so for the record that this isn't a money-making aspect for anyone, this was to recoup a pass-through.
Well, percentage.
Mayor, council members, it depends on what level of operation that we're, we're going to be doing for, say, wash maintenance or for street sweeping, all of those things are actually part of our stormwater management plan, or our air quality plan, or things that have to do through the Arizona Department of Water Resources, which is our dam and wash maintenance, they're all mandated in a way, it's just the level in which we go and do those is, is really what dictates how much money. They're all mandated in a way, it's just the level in which we go and do those is, is really what dictates how much money that we're going to need to run the programs.
What was the amount Craig just sent you?
We have three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for recommended. And like, again, some of those are really, to what level we're going to do those? Are we going to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the wash maintenance or are we going to reduce that? We have a, an ordinance that has wash preservation ordinance that requires us to go and do wash maintenance at times. And then there's also culvert and drainage cleaning, to what level do we do that? We have to do inspections as part of our wash ma, our stormwater management plan, but again, to what level? And then for the, the fees that are required is a hundred and eighteen thousand. Those are the actual costs for our permits and, and things like that that we have to get through the state and through the EPA.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you. Looking back on what, if I could, Raymond, I've got just a couple more thoughts I'd like some help with. It, it seems to me that the four hundred thousand dollars that we're bringing in less a hundred and eighteen thousand for just the fees, if we were to use just the remainder of that, we would never ever get our culverts and drainage caught up in the next twenty-five years or something like that. It was a, it was an astronomical number.
It was a minimal amount of effort.
That would, exactly. But I'm saying if we used the full amount and that still doesn't get our washes clean. And that, and of course, my comment, when I made the motion, I'll, I'll take the heat for this. When I made the motion, I made it quite clear that we need to be very careful about talking about wash maintenance because you let some of these washes catch on fire with a thirty mile an hour wind and we burn seven or eight or ten or fifteen or twenty houses down. And, and that, that could happen. I mean, the way our washes look and with a good wind, that could happen. Then all of a sudden, who's carrying the burden? Who's, who's going to face the, the gauntlet of questions then?
Mayor, Councilman Brown, the, the fire department went out and did a tour of all of the washes. We have acres and acres, hundreds of acres of washes. We, they did an assessment of the washes, so the only washes that we go in and clean are those that the fire department, that they deem those fire hazards or a possibility of flooding. So those washes that you see us in are going to be the narrow washes, the washes that have homes that line them. So those are, we really do concentrate on those and not the big open space areas.
True, and I agree with that. But are we up to date on our wash clean, our wash maintenance?
We're about a four-year cycle, maybe a little bit more. We've been doing a lot of palm tree removal in a couple of the washes. So we're concentrating a little bit more this year on getting that taken care of this year. So we'll probably do a little less than we did last year, but.
So where, where does, where does the seven year, we were supposed to be on a four-year cycle, but due to the lack of money, we're on more like a seven-year cycle?
Well, we were on a seven-year cycle, the last two years we've been able to catch up. So we're about, we're now at about a four, four and a half year cycle.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Thank you, Raymond.
We are mandated to spend a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, correct? And, and change.
Yes, those are, the hundred and eighteen thousand, those are mainly for our permits, our, our dam maintenance and our inspections. The ADWR comes out and does those inspections. Regardless if we like it or not, they come out and do that. So those, and then the street sweeping, block permits, those are the actual mandated costs.
But we have a long list of items, as I understand it, that are not mandated that add up to that five hundred and forty thousand dollars, correct?
Well, they're, they're in our, our program, they're written into our, either written into our permit that we are doing them, like our wash maintenance program. That's in there that we're, we're actually actively doing that. Again, to what level? It didn't say that we had to put a hundred and fifty thousand in.
But I'm not sure that's what I'm asking. If we're mandated to spend a hundred and eighteen thousand, that leaves what, four hundred and fifty thousand, whatever it is, left over?
Correct.
That is volitional. We can decide what to spend, what not to spend, what level to spend, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, there, yes, like there's a household hazardous waste collection event that we would like to do.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Right. We're short right now about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, as I understand it, in collections. Two hundred, what, in rough, round numbers. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the question I would raise is, shouldn't we ask staff to make recommendations as to what might be funded? Give us options, what should be cut back, what should be funded, but it shouldn't be, in my view, just based upon these environmental issues. It could be much broader, looking at our expenses, our budgetary expenses for the town. I don't know that it has to be environmental. For example, you said street sweeping. How often do we do that?
And if I may too, that, that is environmental because of air quality and.
No, I understand, but it's not mandated. Then what is not mandated then?
Mayor, councilmembers, right now our street sweeping schedule, we do the arterial streets, so Saguaro, Fongos Boulevard, Jane Palisades. I think once every three weeks and then we do the residential streets, one every eight weeks, once every eight weeks.
Okay, Paul, but, but that's mandated. So, so I need, what I need to have?
Well, you could, you could actually scale that down, I believe, to once every quarter or twice a year. You would have people screaming at you.
And that's exactly what I'm saying. I mean, shouldn't we be looking at what can be scaled down, what might be scaled down or not scaled down? And in my mind, it doesn't necessarily have to be from that list. We, staff may say, here's six or eight other things that we can at least look at cutting back so that we can do full street sweeping.
I don't think we understand where you're going.
Don't understand what you're going with this?
No.
All right, let me try it again. If we have to find a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, okay? Some of the places may be within this program of items that are listed, such as street sweeping, okay? We could, in order to make up that money for now, for this year, cut back, say, street sweeping to less. Or we might, but it doesn't have to be environmental. I mean, we can go to other programs and see if there's some money, something we can cut back. You understand that?
Well, it's my understanding that the shortfall will be funded from the general fund, is that correct?
Yeah, but let me just explain that I've given specific direction to staff because we had no idea what the collection rate was going to be, that we were not going to be trying to spend the whole five hundred and forty thousand dollars, so we had an idea of what we were going to actually collect. And as part of the overall budget for that environmental fund, we had transfers, if I understand correctly, from highway user revenue funds and also the general fund. Now that's this year, I don't believe that's going to be on an ongoing basis, correct, Paul?
Correct.
So this year is a little bit unique because this was kind of a transitional year. But next year, we were planning or assuming that the environmental fee or some other source would cover these environmental services. So to your point, Alan, is we did anticipate that there were going to have to be some reductions. And so we're going to have to get through and prioritize what we're going to be able to do this, this remainder of the fiscal year. We didn't, we didn't try to just spend the five hundred and forty thousand dollars because I was concerned about having a deficit or shortfall.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was.
Okay, so I was going to say, if we could get back to this list or do you want to?
Well, if I may, I apologize, thank you. With regard to, agnostically speaking, with regard to collection, so I'm not saying whether it's right, wrong or indifferent, we still have roughly thirty-six thousand dollars that we haven't spent towards the collection of these fees. Is there a calculation that we can anticipate that if we went ahead with the phase two of collection, that the thirty-six thousand dollars, if we so choose to spend that, would result in X?
I cannot offer any comments.
I know at one point we were talking about, you know, the, the rate of collection and spending. So if we spent thirty-six, are we, could we triple that? Could we collect another hundred, a hundred and fifty?
You know, it's, it's a good question, and I think like to the finance director's point, I think what I would rather do.
It's an AMS question.
Well, no, I, I, I'm saying what I'd rather do is, we already know that the billing costs forty-five thousand for two different mailings. We don't know what the, that collection rate will be going after the remainder. So what I'd like to do is maybe for next year, once we kind of get some direction on some of these questions tonight, go ahead and, and those that did not pay, be repaid, be billed for those, but it would only be the one parcel, not, you know, multiple parcels. And just handle it that way. And maybe, who knows, maybe we change our methodology, maybe by, instead of parcel, it's by address. I mean, and to me, that almost seems like a no-brainer to, to have something by that methodology. And I think even if we had to pay a firm to give us a clean address list. I just want to let you know, our environmental services manager and I met with Robert Bennett, who's the general manager of Republic Services. He told me that when they entered our market here, the assessor's offices where they went because they can get the records and it was, say, I hate to use the term garbage, but it was garbage. And they actually had to pay a third party to actually get it all cleaned up for them. So, and then kind of tacking on that as another possibility, I mentioned to some of the councilmembers, including the mayor, that maybe we might want to look at a pass-through through Republic because I don't believe Republic was one of the utilities that the former town manager actually had a conversation with. So what I would need to find out is from our attorney, is the way that our contract is structured. If they were willing to do it, would we have to do anything different other than maybe amending the contract or would we? Because what I believe we could do is the next time we go out to bid, for sure, we can make it appear that this is really Town of Fountain Hills solid waste and they are just the provider of that and the billing could automatically have that pass-through of the three dollars a month. But could we do that prior, if they are agreeable to, by having to wait through two thousand and eighteen for the renewal?
Yeah, your, your contract is subject to the council's amendment, valid, or I'm sorry, Republic is willing to do that. It's a pretty simple amendment to handle.
Okay. So that's another option as well, either direct billing to addresses, as we've heard earlier, or going through, you know, Republic. And Republic appears to be very agreeable in general with a number of things they even offered, maybe having a household hazardous day that they would organize, that there would be a, a rate differential. I believe I was, I can't say that the cost is proprietary, but they told me that it would be a very nominal amount, less than a dollar a month.
No one can hear me. Okay, I just, I need to get some things clarified before I, I go any further in this conversation. First off, AMS, we're locking them through your contract, correct?
Almost all of our contracts have a termination for convenience clause built into them.
For convenience?
Yes.
Is that flexible?
Typically, and there's an annual appropriations clause in there too. And if the council fails to appropriate it only for that service, then it terminates automatically.
It's my understanding when they came up with the year, the, the rate to set this up, it was kind of amortized over three years. And, and that was part of the contract that, that I, that I, that I read.
The actual contract is, shall remain in full course and effective until August by two thousand and sixteen.
So it's an annual contract?
Yes.
One year renewals after that?
Yes.
So if we decided to develop a different methodology and use a different person, then we, we can move out of that contract. So that's number one. Number two, I just want to kind of back up in terms of, so here we are, and as has been stated, the intent here was not for multiple billings, but for each person to pay, whether they agreed with it or not, their way with respect to these expenses that are accumulating. And from a budgetary perspective, when this was approved, even if we had collected from all of the parcels, we were still going to come up short. Not to mention the fact that there were a lot of long-term projects, as Dennis mentioned, that weren't even in the scope. And, and I find it interesting that we're wrestling with numbers when those numbers were in, in letters that were sent to folks in terms of that accumulation of numbers. The Fountain Hills Times on three occasions detail what all those were. And as I recall, that's what we were budgeting for, which was about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that's, so that's why, it's, it's a mystery to me that we're going all over the place with, with numbers. Sure, we can do nothing, but that was the reason this fee was passed, so we could do something because we're running behind the eight ball and a lot of issues out there. But first and foremost, bringing it up to real time, it appears to me that the vast majority of the feedback that I've received and that vast majority of the people that have decided to begin paying this didn't have an issue with thirty-six dollar fee. It seems to me that the, although some people did, don't get me wrong there, but it seems to me that the issue here is the unfairness of multiple billings. So I guess my question is, that's where I'd like to start and that's what I'd like to address. For example, there are some categories here that, that group very nice neatly together. And it's my understanding from speaking to town manager and other people on various occasions, there's a lot of people out there that are on hold, that are waiting for some response from us before they send in for their second billing and their third billing. At least that's, that's my understanding. So with respect from that, should we start be talking about an exemption? Should we start talking about where we're at right now and who should be exempted? For example, in your notes, there are a lot of common categories. It was never our intention for common areas to be built. It was never our intention for detached garages to be built. It was never our intention for slices of property in someone's backyard to be built. It wasn't our intention for parcels that were zeroed out. There's, there's some families of, of things that could be put in buckets that if you're looking for authority, I would like to say that, yeah, we have the authority to waive these multiple billings. Now, in terms of what we're going to do next year and how we're going to manage this, that to me is the problem. That, that's the issue, it's the, it's the unjust piece of that. And it was never, you know, and, you know, made clear on several occasions. A lot of this was anticipated, some of us voted for it, some of us didn't vote for it. But that's water under the bridge. The bottom line is, what's the fair thing to do right now? And, you know, I might be up to lunch on this, but, you know, there's people waiting out there in Bay that are basically saying, do I send my second billing in? Is there a way for AMS that's holding, that has received billings or has not received billings to ascertain that? And basically send a correspondence to Jane Doe saying, your household was sent three bills, but you, those will be waived. You will only be accountable for one bill, thank you very much. And I know I'm oversimplifying it, but I think going through this list, I hope for the most of us have done this, we're just going to find a bunch of common buckets and we need to decide how we want to address those. I mean, I think it's academic to talk about how we're going to do this next year, aren't we trying to solve the problems in front of us? So that's, that's probably twenty-five cents worth.
All right, Craig, that's why we're here, to look at your list, because you need direction on which way to go with these issues. So could, you can start.
How would council like to proceed? Do you have numbered items? Do you wish me to read them individually?
I would like to proceed the way I just suggested, if that didn't fall on deaf ears. I mean, I think that's a, I think that's a logical solution. Where are the issues? What are the buckets they're falling into? For instance, common areas, is there a mediation for that? I don't know. That's where we should start. You know, multiple parcels, is there a mediation for that? I mean, you certainly can read through twenty-seven, twenty-eight, four pages of this, hopefully most of us will review that. But there's commonality here.
I would agree with that. Unfortunately, we can make those broad brushes. But practically, in order to do it, we will need to go parcel by parcel to find those. Common areas, there is no general indicator in the assessor's file of what is a common area. We have some, they've identified some, but at the same time, there are others. We have some, they've identified some, but at the same time, there are others that they haven't identified as common areas.
Do we have, does, does, eh, excuse me, mayor, does, does AMS know or not know what households they have sent multiple bills to or not? I mean, I'm talking about a data sort, I'm looking on the AMS side and basically saying, okay, this is your database by address. How, what is the frequency of billings that have gone to those particular addresses? That even simplifies it more. And if it's multiple and they've already paid it, then they should get a letter saying, you don't have to pay anymore.
Uh, AMS does not have that information. They have parcel numbers. And then they have mailing addresses for parcel numbers. Sometimes the parcel numbers and the mailing addresses are the same, but parcel numbers are all different, sometimes mailing addresses are the same.
I understand it's complex, I'm just looking at some bribe rushed solutions, thank you.
So, so Craig, just, just to hit on, and again, I, I don't know if it's possible, but do you think that, assuming there might be, I realize it's a database, they might have probably put it into like an Excel format. Do you think that they might be able to find those addresses that are multiple addresses and, and come up with just the one? And then compare those to what's already been paid?
I was just, I, I'm one of those people, but I agree with what Henry's saying is, let's, let's, because item by item, we'll be here till nine o'clock, not that I don't mind doing that, but it is fairly simple, but I'm one of those people that, I, I own four properties in town, and they received all of them that were billed to my home address, but my, one of them, they billed it there and I never got it, and I knew I had it, I sent it, but there's.
Mayor, councilmembers, to, to kind of go over what Councilmember Jay is asking, um, and Ken will already be able to expand on it. Somebody would need to go and click on every parcel on the, on the GIS to see if it's a common parcel or not. And, and to Councilmember Yates's, you know, point, I know there's a developer, I don't know who it is, Fountain Hills Development LLC, they own like seventy building lots, so that, you know, AMS would show they sent them seventy bills.
And that's what they do.
Yeah. So I don't, AMS could probably weed out how many they sent the multiples, but they have no way of knowing if it's a common parcel or not. That would take somebody, maybe Ken can expand on that, you'd have to, he would literally have to click on
Well, he can could do it.
Fifteen thousand parcels to figure out which ones are common areas and which ones are not, and which ones should receive a bill or not. And it could be done, it would just take time.
So, Mayor and Council, uh, to answer your question about, uh, how many residential floors have been billed?
Can you speak up a little bit for the audience?
Okay, uh, how many residential, uh, billings have been, uh, accepted and paid? Craig and I just had a conversation, uh, just, you know, not too long ago, uh, before this meeting, and I brought up the idea of, okay, let's find out, uh, via map. Let's map out every parcel that has paid. That way we have an idea of what we're looking at, and then what is left, you know, where do we need to go? So that, I, I think you kind of mentioned something like that, where, you know, where are we now, maybe? Maybe not.
It's close, yeah.
Okay. Something that I was thinking about while I was sitting down is, uh, I, uh, I put together the land use analysis report, you know, every year, and I deal with the dwelling units, occupied, vacant, lots that are vacant, um, and I was thinking, um, looking at the numbers that have come in so far, thinking, single-family home, thinking, single-family lot, occupied. Uh, we, we've got about ninety-five hundred, just under ten thousand. Then we get into the multifamily, that's, that's where the issue seems to be right now. So we've got roughly what, three, uh, four thousand, for example, multifamily lots. But then we've got units on those lots, which multiply even more. So that's probably the focus, uh, we need to look at the multifamily, I, I think we've got the single-family down. And I think a lot of these questions that are on this list has to do, deal with, uh, common element, units. And then we have unit numbers that, I don't know what happened at the county level, but a lot of unit numbers either got, you know, switched this way, or they don't match the deeds, they don't match the plat, or when you go second, third, fourth, I don't know what happened with those unit numbers. Sometimes the fourth level is one-on-one, and that's out of our control.
It seems, it seems to me that.
All right, can I get, can I get Councilman Hanson in?
Oh, that's okay, I mean, you can finish on that vein, I was just talking about common areas. And by and large, the common areas are usually owned by the H O A for that property. So, I mean, if we're looking at that, it almost seems like each individual homeowner in there is already really paying for their piece of the common area. If you figure, okay, this, this is a piece of your yard. So the common areas probably just would become a moot point anyway if they were considered to be included in the individual homeowner's properties.
Councilman Hanson, uh, from what we've learned, when the county split the parcels for primarily duplexes and created a common area, they acknowledged they were not consistent. Some of the common areas, the land and tax was parceled out to the two units in the duplex. Other cases, it was not, and there is a third parcel with a tax bill.
See, in that case, the address would take care of it, because it would be like, okay, a duplex, that's two, then that third bill would go away. It would, I mean, we would just assume that that would be incorporated into each side of the duplex.
All, all I was going to say, and I would agree with the mayor, process wise, we should, I guess, move forward in terms of what was decided. But I, I'm thinking we need some type of out-of-the-box thinking on this to create a level playing field. Because every time I put something out there, or anyone here puts something out here, the insanity of all of this is parcels. So I don't think we can utilize parcels as the base for problem solving around this. Because every time we've posed something for the last month, every question I've asked is, no, it can't be done that way, it can't be done that way. And I think, and I don't have the answer, but I think we need to move away from the parcel deal, and maybe we need to just make right with those people that feel like they were, you know, screwed over, excuse the French, and then restructure this whole thing for next year, and, and if someone basically, and we publish something, we publish something and basically say, if you were not reimbursed, or if you had this situation, I mean, that's going to be less time consuming than to try to reinvent, reinvent the wheel here, because, you know, it's an old standard. We're using parcels, and it's a losing scenario, we've learned that. One last question, and then I'm, I'm, I'm done for environmental fees. I wish we were to call it infrastructure improvement fees rather than environmental fees, I think people have accepted that a lot, but, but I was just curious, how many bills did the town receive?
Two hundred and seventy-six?
Yeah, so the Town of Fountain Hills has paid for taxpayers, two hundred and seventy-six, uh, bills.
Did they pay it?
Yes.
Yeah, of course, we, we need to set, we need to accept that example, but I had a race with Craig, I think I was the first one to know. No, but that's, that's just the point, I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot left on the table right there. Um, but we're doing, we're doing our part on that, but anyhow, thank you, mayor.
It seems like we have more problems and no solutions to a lot of this here.
Thank you.
Is there any way that we could get a list of all addresses and match it up against everything that's been paid already, and see what's left, and use the remainder of the address list and dump the parcel list?
I believe we could obtain a list of situs addresses, um, match them to the AMS billing addresses. Although we have a problem with the assessor's file, um, and how they recorded addresses. So that, I'm guessing it would take a good chunk of manual effort to try to match the two. But technically, I believe it could be done.
Okay, because it seems like I, did you want to? I, I just, there doesn't seem to be any answers to this, because if one person says, I have a problem, and we say, okay, you don't have to pay, then what about the person who already paid?
And we have a lot of those.
That's not fair, so it should be for everybody or for nobody. So I would like to see a list of the addresses. And, you know, unfortunately, because we're in this bad situation, we might just have to cut our losses and say, we'll do the best we can with the addresses this year, so that people that just own a parcel are not charged, or two parcels, or three parcels, or common areas, and that's going to eliminate all those issues. So I guess the question is, how do we get those addresses? It's interesting that we don't have a list of all the addresses in our own town. Any suggestions, Grady, on how we can get those addresses?
Um, I have a couple, so, um, I'm not, I'm not sure that we actually ask for addresses from the utility companies. And I'm not aware of anybody living in town that doesn't have a water account. Uh, there may be some people with septic, but I don't believe there's anybody in town with a septic system that may not be paying a sewer fee, so, um, I would be happy for the staff and I to, uh, research that. And also, I think Republic would be the other, and I, I, you know, would, that would be something that we would work on. I think what I would like to do, I, I know staff was really trying to address some of these issues that we have, and it's putting them in a spot, because we had given commitments to people that we would try to get the council to take some direction on some of these anomalies that we have before you tonight. But in talking with staff, we, we just don't think that we can continue with the parcel, um, either, and it's just, it's a mess. And the issue that we see going forward is that every time you have a sale of property, it's going to be messed up because it takes a while for the assessor's office to get their records updated, and even when they do, it might be garbage in, garbage out. And so I think our best bet is to, um, probably come back with a plan on addressing this in the future, and maybe just kind of stop where we're at and go forward, and put together a plan that's sound. Again, I think we did everything on the front end very well. Uh, we did anticipate all these issues from the assessor's office, and I'm not blaming the assessor's office, but this was just a very cumbersome way of, of dealing with something that could have been handled in an easier way. Uh, no, no one's to blame here, it's just that I think there's a better way of doing it.
But I would still rather not just wait and do it over again next year, because I think that people that have already paid, who shouldn't have paid, shouldn't have to, they should, they should be reimbursed for the money that they put out. So I think that we should, and I'll open this up to any other suggestions, but I think we should try and get that list of the addresses and match it up against, and do our best to see which addresses are left. And if the address, if when we match it up with AMS's parcel list, if the add, if there's parcels that are not on our address list, then we know that those should be refunded, because those are parcels and not addresses.
So mayor, just for clarification, are you saying those that might have paid for multiple parcels for the same property, if they paid for multiple parcels, refund them for the multiple parcel that they paid, but keep the, the thirty-six?
For the address, for the one address.
Refund the other?
Yes, because it's, if we can't collect from everybody, it's not fair to collect from some, and I think that's been the problem from the beginning, is how do you make this fair? I'm always talking about fair, everybody tells me nothing's fair, but I'm always talking about fair, and this was not fair. It was, I understand, the other, the former manager, he thought that this was the only way how to do it. Um, and the way it was presented, I can understand why the staff went forward with it. But obviously, the many problems that have come up show us that we ought to stop what we're doing right now. And if we do it that way, I don't know if any of this would be left on the list.
Yeah.
Councilman Magazine.
Picking up on a couple of ideas from council members, this may be off the wall, but I want to try it. First of all, we don't know if we can get addresses. If we can get addresses, it's going to take an enormous amount of work, staff work, to match them up with the parcels. What if we were to announce, publicly announce, that certain categories, uh, would not have to pay the fee? So for example, if, why are you looking at me like that?
I could, I could see chaos, everybody showing up at the front desk.
Well, it depends on how you word, how you word it. For example, if, if church down the street sent in thirty-six dollars or multiple parcels, and we now announce that they're exempt, uh, or common areas, certain kinds of common areas, if we can define them, they're exempt, and that folks who have made those payments, who have those situations, will be reimbursed. There might be a way to simplify the whole process this year, not next year, but this year. In other words, stop the whole program right now, except for the people who, uh, the, the people who, uh, fit into these buckets, that Councilman Legere was talking about, would not have to pay. If they have paid, then they need, we need to set up a process for them to, I'm using the word appeal, I don't think it's a good word, appeal and get reimbursement. Wouldn't that be a simpler way to proceed?
I just think we're talking about a whole lot of staff time, and someone comes in, this parcel, I, you know, parcel or two parcels, and now you have to reimburse me for that, and the staff has to stop, they have to look it up. I mean, I could see this taking a tremendous amount of time, as opposed, because there could be a lot of people that come forward.
But you're talking, aren't you talking about pairing up parcels with addresses?
Well, what if it's, well, what if it's easy to get the addresses and to just match it up with the parcels? And then we already know then which address is paid, which didn't, and whatever's left over, we know were parcels. And if they were paid, they get reimbursed, and if they weren't, then we don't have to worry about billing them.
I, I'd like to ask Craig, uh, how intensive that process would be.
Let me go to Councilman Brown, maybe he has a simpler way of what I'm trying to say.
Oh, I, I clearly understand what you're saying, do we have any idea how many, how many total addresses that have multiple parcels that have paid? Do we have any?
I do not.
Uh, guess on it? It might, it might only be, you know, fif- fifty?
I do know that there was a golf course in town that said that they were only paid three out of the forty that they have, so, but there's going to be those kind of situations.
I thought a lot of people are kind of waiting to hear back from us, that are holding back.
Right, based on the discussions with staff.
Well, if announced they're exempt, that would make it a huge number.
Councilman Yates?
In an attempt, and I, obviously the, the water's extremely muddy, we need to empower somebody to make these decisions, because if we come right here, I don't want to inundate anybody with two hundred or two, twenty calls, but nevertheless, we need, I think what we need to do tonight is empower somebody on staff, and Grady, I'm kind of looking at you, to kind of make it case by case, based on, um, if the headline reads, you know, hardships, question the town, however you want to read it, and then the case by case, and then moving forward, and, and I'm with you that it's unfortunate of those of us who paid multiple parcels and probably shouldn't have. Um, but it would be, I hate to say it, but the onus on them is to write the letter and say, look, I got three things. We shouldn't take this on ourselves internally, we can't put this on you, let's empower Grady or somebody thinking, and then you can report on a quarterly basis, here's kind of what I did, hoping that you're not going to get inundated.
So I, I hear what you're saying, and I think that that's, I'm fine with that, in fact, I believe that was what the motion was drafted for tonight. But one of the things that I think would be important for the staff and myself, is to try, and, and this, uh, council member, Vice Mayor Legere said, that it would be helpful to at least get those exemptions, whatever those might be, maybe the common areas, the, you know, so we have those things that we've discussed earlier, so we actually have the ability to work with AMS on that.
I think that's a great idea.
And I think you have that in your data, because all I did to come up with these clusters is to, to just correlate what fell into, as I like to refer to it as a bucket. But a point of clarity, there may be someone who has paid two bills, and it is fair. For example, you know, I mean, the intent here was per either lot owner or homeowner, or we used the word household. When a lot of people ask me about it, I just, I had three bills, I'll say, well, we have three separate properties, do you hold? I'll say, well, we have three separate properties. Do you hold title to three separate properties? And they said, yes. And I said, okay, well, that's ownership. You have ownership over that. But the ones here that are unjust are the folks that, like the gentleman that doesn't live in his garage, by the way. He lives in his house, and he got charged for his garage. And the folks that live in a duplex, that are each paying on both sides, but they're not paying, they don't have to pay for the common area. So I, I think there's a point of clarity there. I mean, if I own two homes, then the intent was for myself to pay per home because it's per lot, per home, that's taking advantage of either street cleaning, or wash cleaning, so forth and so on. But if we could.
Councilman Yates?
Well, do we want to make the bucket list here? Or again, I have no problem doing it, or since staff, Craig, I'm not going to even look at you. But if staff kind of comes up with the three to five buckets and maybe come back at a council meeting, because I have a feeling we're all on the same page. But if we're up here, we're gonna, we're gonna beat this down.
We'll, we'll do that. And what I would also recommend is that through the budget process, we'll actually develop a plan that you'll be able to see on how we'll go forward with this for next year. So we'll commit to coming up with a plan. And we'll have already vetted how we can get addresses that will be clean addresses. But I think what Mr. Rudolphy was saying, that he had a concern with, is that you have billing addresses, and then you have parcel numbers on that same bill, and they don't necessarily always correspond because it's a parcel number and not the address of the property in question, correct?
Correct.
So that's, that's the challenge that we have. And that's because of the way the records are organized by the assessor's office. So it, it's going to be a challenge, but we'll come back with, you know, an action plan on this.
I still think that we should try to get an address list. So when we run into problems, is this a parcel? Is this a house? Is this just a lot that we have something to pull back on to look at? Because I just think this is going to be a lot of staff time trying to figure out who paid, who didn't pay, who's supposed to pay. You know, sometimes you gotta just say, you know, this wasn't the right way to go, and you gotta try to fix it. Now, we could wait till next year, and all the people that paid, they gotta come to us. See, I don't think they should come to us because it's our mistake. We should be going to them to fix it for them because we put them in this situation. So that's, I'd still like to, and I, I think we could probably get the list from EdCor. I'd be willing to, to talk to them, myself.
I, and to the mayor.
Or from Republic.
I, and I think you're right. I think we could probably do that. I think the concern, I think this is what Mr. Rudolphy was trying to explain, is that the addresses we get from the different utility companies would be great for next year. But trying to correlate those necessarily to the parcels and the addresses that were billed will be okay on a number of cases, but not for all the cases. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so it's not perfect. And again, it's because of the way the methodology, parcels is not a really good methodology, so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure there was no one out that wanted to speak. You could speak, you know, if you want to fill out a card, if anyone wanted to speak. Councilman Porter.
Mayor, is there, because of, and I agree with Vice Mayor Legere, there are probably a considerable amount of people out there in a holding pattern. Just wondering if they should send it in or not. Is it possible, based on, you know, we all talked about what the intention of this fee was, is it possible that we can empower Grady and Craig tonight to, some of these questions that are, you know, is my bathroom a parcel? That seems pretty simple, like can he be empowered? Because there's follow-up to be had, and there's people, there's voicemails. I'm sure lots of emails. For some of these that are parcel related, and maybe it's too early to say, here's how we're going to fix that, but no, you don't pay two bills. Send the one for, ideally, parcel X, Y, Z, if we have that. But no, it's just one payment, send them on in. And then we're going to figure it out afterwards so that there's not this sort of holding pattern out there. And then they can get some of those follow-ups off their to-do list now while we fix it for the future.
Councilman Yates?
One thing we haven't discussed, although I contacted AMS, very easy to speak with and very convenient. Their website gives us some prominent spots on what's going on. But one item was also about different ways to pay because I know they offer the credit card online. But one more thing that we might want to consider is offering, whether it be internal, I don't, I don't want to add more, is any kind of e-check or, or some of those things. Because I think there's only just two ways that you can pay online if you don't physically send a check.
There's a charge for all of those.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying. If there's any other methodologies that, just a few folks were saying, well, I don't use this, or that, I wanted to do some other method.
You could get a bank check. They don't charge you at the bank. Wherever you bank, if you go there, you get a bank check. You could just mail that, and that's not much.
Just sharing what some folks are saying.
Yeah, but that's another method if they don't, some people then feel comfortable using their credit cards or any of that either. So that's another way how to do it.
Well, Mayor and Council, we can get some direction, a formal motion, so that we have the direction. And I think what I'm hearing is for staff, where we've identified the residents who had these issues, for us to get back with them that we're aware of. So like, all these examples, we know who goes where, correct, Mr. Rudolphy?
Yes.
So we will get back with those folks that are already identified here. And we will then try to match up the parcels with the addresses and find out where we have these multiple parcels for the single addresses. And we will empower the town manager to act as your agent, basically authorize the town manager to, to, I guess, hear appeals or make decisions when there's a question on this.
Okay, maybe after the decisions are made, maybe you could get together with Bob from The Times. And he could do an article, you know, explaining everything so that people know if they've wrong, if they've wrongly paid, then they're entitled to a refund or whatever. Because there are people out there who, as soon as they get a bill, they pay because they're afraid not to pay it, and maybe they didn't have to. And I don't want those people to be, to be left like that.
Okay.
Ready for motion?
Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion. Grady, does the motion as written work for you, for what you just outlined?
I think so.
As stated?
I mean, it pretty well covers.
Yes, and we could take the direction, the additional enhanced direction that we received.
Okay, then I move to approve direction, providing to staff regarding environmental fees, questions, issues, problems, and approving the town manager as the person having ultimate authority in resolving any questions, issues, problems.
And the motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any votes? There's seven, zero.
I need to present, I need to be right in the minutes of this discussion.
Move to adjourn.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we will adjourn upstairs for our executive session, so nobody disappear.